Before we begin today's agenda, we have a special presentation by Jamie Torres Springer with an update on the Borough-Based Jails Program.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Commissioners. Here today. So as noted, my name is Jamie Torres Springer. I'm the First Deputy Commissioner of the Department of Design and Construction. We're responsible for the delivery of the Borough-Based Jails Program. I'm also joined by other staff from DDC as well as from the Department of Correction, and I think the Mayor's Office of Criminal Justice will be along shortly. And then we have assisting with the presentation Beverly Pryor and Frances Cook, who are from our Program Manager from a joint venture of AECOM and Hill in the delivery of the jails program. So we wanted to come today and, forgive me, I have a bit of a lingering cold here, but we wanted to come today and provide you as a commission with an update on the status of the Borough-Based Jails Program, as well as provide an overview to the approach that we're taking to manage the design, and specifically in the short term, the creation of design guidelines and other scoping documentation that will guide high-quality design for each of the Borough-Based Jails facilities. And then today, we wanted to give you a detailed update about the design guidelines that are being prepared for the Queens parking garage construction, which is really the first work that is being undertaken for delivery under this program. So that's our agenda for today, to provide you with an overview, and some of this is a bit of a refresh. As you know, the administration's plan is to close Rikers Island by 2026, as well as the other facilities that exist in the boroughs at present, and to rebuild based on approval provided by the Commission and the City Council late last year, to rebuild four facilities of 886 beds each that provide much more high-quality and positive criminal justice and humane outcomes. We have emphasized in the master planning and the approval during the EULAR process the degree to which the facilities must be contributions to civic architecture of the city and supportive of neighborhood context, in addition to being highly innovative in delivering criminal justice outcomes inside the buildings, as well as ensuring the safety of city staff that are, and other staff who are working within those buildings. There's a recognition underpinning all of our work here that environment drives behavior, and we're looking to create an environment that allows us to drive positive behavior and better criminal justice outcomes. We are trying to build on best practices worldwide for creating that kind of an environment and have surveyed some of those practices. A delegation of us recently did take a look at facilities both on the West Coast of the United States, in the South, and also in the Netherlands and in Norway, where we have very high-quality criminal justice outcomes and innovation in design and delivery. And we were very pleased to get a chance to look at some of those facilities directly. This is the schedule for delivery of the program. As you'll recall, the city is authorized to deliver the Borough-Based Jails through the design-build vehicle for delivery, which allows us considerable efficiency and ability to take advantage of innovation. It also, and I think really key to this conversation, allows us to select our builders based on best value rather than low bid. We will be fixing a price for the delivery of the facilities and then asking the proponents, who will be responding to our RFP, to come back and show us how much they can actually deliver, how high-quality, what kind of a design, what kind of a facility they can deliver for that price. And that is really an important innovation that, among other things, will allow us a great opportunity to get the highest quality of design for the facilities. As a result, what you can see here is while we have some early works that are scheduled, which I'll show you in a moment, we're largely engaged in procurement in 2020 and 2021, and the design and construction of the facilities will take place approximately from 2022 through 2026. And we are on schedule with this program as I stand here today. This second version of the schedule really focuses on procurement to give you an update on some of the activities that we're in the midst of now. By legislation, our design-build requires a two-step procurement, where first of all, we solicit respondents, we evaluate those respondents, and then shortlist, and there will be a confidential competition that will take place amongst those on the shortlist. And we call that the RFP phase. So first, we have an RFQ that goes out to solicit qualifications. We get respondents back, we'll shortlist, and then we issue that shortlist a request for proposals and have a very rigorous and intensive process of working with them as they prepare those proposals. So you see the schedule on this slide. For various reasons, we've initiated procurement on the early works, namely the Queens and Brooklyn facilities being dismantled and swing space created so that we can, the Department of Correction, can still bring those within the criminal justice system to court, which is adjacent to those facilities, and construction of a parking garage, which is authorized adjacent to the Queens facility. So those are the, where we've initiated procurement. We've released RFQs for two of those three, and we'll release the third shortly. And then shortly after that, we'll be releasing requests for proposals to shortlisted respondents. In addition to that, the request for qualifications for the four facilities was released this month, a couple of weeks ago. So you can see that here, February of 2020. We'll be accepting qualifications from respondents for the first two facilities that are slated to move forward, which is Manhattan and the Bronx, next month, and then proceed to release detailed requests for proposals for those two facilities in roughly the spring, summer, early fall of this year. And then the Brooklyn and Queens facilities will cycle behind, will be accepting those qualifications in about a year, and then follow that up so that we have all four facilities in significant motion by the end of 2021. Also wanted to talk about the approach that we're taking to managing design. The Department of Design and Construction views this as a great opportunity to build on our track record of managing delivery of high-quality public infrastructure and buildings. DDC's Project Excellence Program builds on a strong tradition of innovation in architecture and engineering through strategies and practices that balance a few critical factors: aesthetics, functionality, cost, constructibility, and durability, all of which are very important in delivery of this program and the operation of the facilities going forward. And we do all that in order to bring form and meaning to public space. I wanted to tell you today about some of the key elements that we're incorporating into the process to ensure that we get this very high-quality level of design that we're seeking. So first of all, we're setting selection criteria for the qualifications that place an emphasis on the ability to deliver projects and the ability to deliver them using a high-quality design approach. You can see here that some of the critical factors we'll be using in evaluation are evidence of past projects, key personnel, including the senior design personnel that will be included on the project team, the overall philosophy and management approach that we see. Of course, when we, this is the qualification stage. When we get to full request for proposal, we will be, of course, emphasizing the quality and constructibility of the design proposal itself that is being developed. At this stage, we're looking at qualifications and placing great emphasis on design within each of these categories. In addition to our selection criteria, we're providing design guidance through the creation of scoping documentation that will be given to the respondent teams again during the second round, the RFP stage. The intent of the design guidelines is to identify the essential qualitative goals of the program, to aid teams in preparing proposals, inspire creative solutions, and support the evaluation and selection process. You can see here how the design guidelines that are being created will inform the more technical specifications that will be part of the RFP. So the guidelines, the articulation of goals is really important here for each of the facilities. These guidelines will be informed, as you can see here, by substantial consultation and review of documentation that has come before. So just highlighting a few things that are important here in our development of design guidelines. We're looking at the work done by the Mayor's Justice Implementation Task Force, by outside groups like the Van Allen Institute, a lot of very helpful work by neighborhood advisory committees during the approval process, and the Borough-Based Jails Master Plan, which was the basis for the EULAR proposal, which will be available to the design builders. We've been working very, in lockstep with our sponsor agencies, Department of Correction, Mayor's Office of Criminal Justice, and Correctional Health Services on facility planning to support the guidelines that we produce. We've been on site visits, and I should say that in general, we are really working very closely with Department of City Planning and Public Design Commission staff. So as an example of that, we've been on site visits to each future facility site with city planning staff to understand urban context, think about what has been laid out in the EULAR approval. And then most importantly, we have a lot of stakeholder review happening. As I mentioned, been collaborating very closely with city planning and Public Design Commission staff. We've also been doing community design workshops out in the neighborhoods where the facilities will be constructed. Last week, we did workshops in Manhattan and Queens. The others will be happening soon thereafter. Also, really at the Chair's request, we created a design advisory group that is advising on the design guidelines that we're producing. And lastly, we'll be doing an architectural peer review, which I'll come back to just in one minute. Here's an example of how this planning and design guidance process works for a given facility. We really have three phases here. Before we issue an RFP, while we're in market with the RFP, and our respondents are producing their proposals, and then after we award a contract and are moving into final design and construction. You can see that now is a really key time as we're producing, for example, design guidelines for Manhattan, where we're working with local elected officials, the design advisory group, doing community workshops, consulting with community boards, other design organizations, justice advocacy organizations, and then working very closely with city planning staff, briefing you, working with the Public Design Commission. Then when we're in market, this is a confidential process that's taking place as respondents develop their proposals. We've incorporated city planning and PDC staff into that process in a confidential fashion. And then once we are making the award, we're back out and really following the standard process for designing and seeking approval for public projects, which really sort of amounts to Public Design Commission approval of both preliminary and final design. But before that takes place, we'll be again out there with the stakeholders, reviewing in substantial detail the designs that have been created, as well as working closely with staff. As I mentioned, a lot of this that is very important is community engagement, which we've already commenced, is focusing on aspects of the public realm and soliciting feedback on the community and pedestrian experience, as well as ideas for community facility uses. And then, as I briefly mentioned earlier, we're very pleased to be announcing today that the city will be forming an architectural peer review panel for the Borough-Based Jails. This is a best practice for designing public facilities that the city hasn't had occasion to use before, but is very important in the design-build process. So we'll be releasing some more details of this in the coming few days. But essentially, we are looking and have sought nominations, and we'll be announcing a panel of distinguished architects and urban planners who will help us by reviewing the scoping documentation that is the basis for the request for proposals. And then we'll conduct a confidential review of the design proposals themselves to provide feedback. We're very pleased with the sort of emerging panel that includes architects with international stature, with New York experience, high-rise buildings, institutional buildings, focus on urban design and planning, and also criminal justice track records as well, including on some of the innovative facilities in the United States and Europe that I mentioned that we've had a look at. So we'll have details about this panel soon, but I would say we're very excited about having this as a part of our process, and it definitely complements the community review and input that is taking place. So with that, I want to ask Beverly Pryor from our program management team to come and walk you through the, a little more detail on the design guidelines themselves.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. So there's been a lot of input, as Jamie was saying, from community, from justice organizations, from the Mayor's Office, Department of Corrections, and so on. So we have been, maybe I didn't get the right way to move this forward, or here we go. So we've actually looked in terms of developing design guidance, which is an overarching direction ultimately, that then we have technical documents to support for the design builders. We've started by looking at the program-wide design goals, and I'll share those with you in a moment, but those were four very broad goals that then, we can then generate from the guiding statements from other stakeholders. The program-wide design principles come out of that. And again, when we're saying the program-wide, we're referring to the Borough-Based Jail program. So there are, as Jamie said, there's a garage coming out of it, and there's some other smaller early works projects coming out of it. This is for the overarching for the jails program. Then there will be site-specific and project-specific design guidelines that will be informed by the location, the community context, and what that scope of work is. So the four program-wide design goals are, fall within these four categories of supportive environments, and that's really about the wellness for the occupants, creating a normative environment, as Jamie said, that environment cues behavior. So if you can make it more normative, creating a safe place, a place where people can have some autonomy, they can move from place to place. And you think about the wellness features that support, you know, views of nature, natural light, those types of aspects. The connected communities, I want to emphasize on that one. It's not just about the community that the building is within, but it's also creating community within the facility, having the persons in custody be able to connect with their family members, have good connections with the staff, and to support those kinds of connections. Civic assets, that's really around the urban realm, how the building is fitting into that area, the connections, the streetscape, creating outstanding architecture supportive of the fabric of the existing neighborhoods. And then how the building actually endures from a high-performance perspective, sustainability, So we'll take each one of these just a little bit further. We've then got these program-wide principles for each one of these. So examples of this are this, what we call normative environment, or this sense of normalcy, that there's a sense of autonomy, that somebody in custody can go into the recreation yard, they can go to a program, and to be able to move themselves through the facility, creating, encouraging physical activity, creating some privacy. So those are programmatic types of things that are intended in this supportive environments. For this, creating a sense of community, that's partly, again, the way, for instance, the housing environments are set up to allow people to connect with each other, to have programs for, let's say, management for self-improvement, a sense of welcome. And so if you think of the different communities, there's the visitors, there's the persons in custody, and there's the staff, you know? How do you create a healthy environment and a sense of community among the different folks with, that have a stake in this facility? Civic assets, you know, connection, how this, the experience of this asset is at the pedestrian level, as well as sense of safety, security, what it's like at nighttime, all those different elements, streetscape and so on. And then the last one, the enduring resources. I mentioned this about, you know, sustainability and high performance. We've had, you know, one of our community outreaches was from Borough President that said, like, "I really want you to think about passive house, and how can we reduce the energy footprint of these buildings?" And so this is something that becomes a challenge to the design builders. We put that out as a desire of the city and see what they can come back with in a competitive environment. I guess one other, other piece of this is what might change over time? What if the population of people in custody reduces over time? Are there alternative ways that portions or large, you know, parts of the building can be reused? And so we're actually planning to put those kinds of challenges out to the design builders of, you know, what if some of this is repurposed? Can you have an elevator system? And, you know, how do you do this to support changes over time? The same thing with the parking garage, you know? Is there going to be a future that has fewer self-driven vehicles? And how do you repurpose that building? And that becomes a challenge to the design builders. So now Frances Cook will talk about, so where we're at is we're still in the process of developing the Queens Garage Design Guidelines, but we're going to talk about the process we're in and where some of the thinking is going on that. So Frances? This is how you advance it.
Thank you, Beverly. Good afternoon, Commissioners. So the site that we have is kind of bound by Briarwood, Forest Hills, and Kew Gardens. And currently, it's the site of the Queens Borough Hall. And existing on the site is a large, somewhat recently completed parking lot. As you can see, it's got a strong adjacency to Queens Boulevard and the Van Wyk Expressway, and also Union Turnpike. In the, in the context, what's kind of interesting about this site is that it really is kind of at the heart of Briarwood, Forest Hills, and Kew Gardens, and yet strangely kind of removed from it. So trying to be sensitive to the fact that this is a civic campus that in many ways stands alone is an issue, getting back to the idea of creating an engaging civic asset because it's part of this campus. And yet, it's still kind of interconnected with the community from the pedestrian bridge that connects Briarwood across the Van Wyk Expressway. People will be moving, you know, through there and getting to the mass transit along Queens Boulevard, the bus stops along Union Turnpike. And also of interest to us is the green space immediately behind Helen Marshall Community Center, the cultural center, and the opportunity that's there for the community spaces within the garage to kind of face and support that green space. And this you've kind of seen before, but we've summarized it. This is what was agreed to in the EULAR process, where effectively the parking will be providing 676 parking spaces. There'll be above-grade and below-grade parking spaces and a 25,000-square-foot community space. The community space has a required frontage and a required depth, so it really is not going to be something buried inside of the garage, but will really be, really be an asset that we hope will help activate and create a real sense of community engagement within the civic campus. So last Thursday night, we had our Queens Community Workshop, which was a really interesting and engaging conversations we had with local stakeholders. And we heard kind of several key things that they're really concerned about, that this facility should kind of embrace the diversity of the surrounding communities, safety is absolutely a concern, and that the, not only the character, but the vibrancy of the neighborhoods is represented some way in this facility. They wanted to make sure that things were open and accessible to all ages, that it's really well-lit, and that when it comes to the facilities, they really resonated with this idea of having natural light be a part of that as well. For the community center itself, there are some limitations in the EULAR about uses, but we heard kind of clearly from them that meeting rooms, STEM education, healthcare, a cafeteria for people coming to the campus is something that they would really like to see there. So from a use point of view, we do think that it will really, the use itself will help activate this. So as also what we heard were a series of key issues that we're currently working into the design guidelines themselves, where they really want to make sure that the ground floor of the garage is really activated and part of the public space, and not just seeing cars, but something that participates in the, in the public realm. They really want to try to minimize the interference of cars and pedestrian flows, which is something that is kind of determined by the EULAR, but we think that there's many ways we can nudge through the guidelines to make sure that the design respondents really respond to that well, and making sure that the pedestrian experience there is something that is more than just a sidewalk and a couple of trees, that it's a place where they can envision going and trying to make something that's representative of the community and beneficial. And they're also quite interested in the garage being more than just slabs in concrete, which we're kind of very heartened to hear, that it'll create a visually interesting garage, that it's something, it is a public function, but that it won't look just like a piece of industrial refuse. So the separation between the ground floor and the rest of the building, there's many other, as we write this, we were trying to do it in a way where, we're trying to get the design respondents to think critically about the community facility in the garage, and there may be space in their design solutions where the community space is embedded, but it may indeed even be a separate building, which may have some very interesting advantages. And what was really heartening to hear is that they're very concerned about sustainability as a community. So they asked lots of questions about cool roof and green roof and PV panels and energy generation. So I think a lot of the community's interest is very much in alignment with our goals as well.
Thank you. So just, just to wrap up before taking your questions, this is a list of our next planned updates to the Commission. As a reminder, the plan is for us to come and give you a run-through of the design guidelines for each facility before we put that out in an RFP, and then to bring back the awarded design to provide a briefing of the Commission on that awarded design post-award. So we'll be back with the design guidelines for Manhattan and the Bronx this spring, with the awarded design for the garage and community facility in Queens in the winter upon selection, and then, of course, provide you with ongoing updates on progress on the
Thanks so much for the presentation, and I will channel Commissioner Burney, who couldn't be here today, in saying that we're very pleased about the fact that peer review will in fact be used. I also want to note for the Commission that we have two members of our urban design team at City Planning, Eric Gregory and Eugenia Di Geralamo, both here in the audience, who have been working intensely with DDC and the project management team, and will continue to do so throughout this project. And they are also working hand-in-glove with Justin Moore, who heads the Public Design Commission and is a DCP alum. And with that, I'll turn it over, I'll turn it over for questions. Commissioner Capelli.
Hi, thank you for the presentation. One of the speakers had mentioned the repurposing buildings in the, in the event that the population goes down. What if the population increases? And what has been the effect thus far of bail, the bail changes that took place over the first two months? Where's the population at now? And how close are you to the necessary beds?
Thanks, Commissioner. I have to say that that's really a question for the Mayor's Office of Criminal Justice, and I don't believe they're with us today, but I guess we'd, we'd pass that along to them and ask them to get back to you on that.
If you could, I, you know, I, obviously, plans have, you got to plan it to both ways. Thank you.
Commissioner Vice Chernuckles.
Earlier in the presentation, I noticed the term "in-market" designs. What precisely does that mean?
Yeah, thank you. That's, that's, it's a good point. It's a sort of procurement jargon for us that maybe we should sort of erase from these presentations. As I described, Commissioner, we have basically three periods of a design-build project. The first is before we have a shortlist of respondents. The first is before we have a short list of respondents who are preparing their proposals. We call, that's the phase we're in now, where we're preparing a design guideline, we have a request for qualifications that brings us back. Then we have what we call the in-market period, which is just the RFP period, meaning that we have a short list, we issue an RFP to them, it's got, I showed the details of design guidelines, performance specifications, all of those criteria. And then in this case, we have an eight-month period projected in which they're preparing detailed design. We have numerous meetings with them and there is oversight and supervision so that we're giving them feedback all along the way. At the end of that period, the city, which includes numerous agencies and representatives, will make a selection and award the successful respondent and also, I should note, pay a very generous stipend to the unsuccessful respondents, which is really a key thing about design-build. So that's what we call the in-market phase. And then the third phase is post-award, when we're actually getting into detailed design and construction.
Commissioner Cirillo.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioner, how are you? Nice to see you.
You too.
Just if you can just elaborate a little bit on the sort of either the working relationship, the connection or the influences between the, I guess the good news, the architectural peer review and the peer panel and how the community is involved in influencing design? Because obviously, I know probably from a design-build and the simplest, most efficient way is to have one sort of idea, but yet every neighborhood's a little different and we're talking about four completely different boroughs and communities. So I just wonder how those things relate to one another so that communities feel they're involved in the process besides just, you know, having to deal with what's happening.
Yes. Thank you very much for that question, Commissioner. We agree that that is really a critical component of delivering such an important public project that will be standing for decades and generations and are highly sensitive to the needs and interests of local communities, in addition to obviously the big criminal justice agenda that we have here to reform criminal justice in the city. So it is really the critical point. I think, sort of to respond to the last point you made first, I think it is important to say, when we think about how we create design guidelines for one of these facilities, there are really two pieces of it. One is probably relatively similar across all four facilities, which is we need a building, it has a certain program within it, that program contains housing units, it contains recreation areas, indoor and outdoor, programming, education space, vertical circulation, you know, the infrastructure within the building. We can be relatively consistent about those things because that is really driven by what we're trying to achieve within the building. It varies somewhat by facility. For example, we have the women's component within the Queens facility. There are different numbers of therapeutic beds within each facility, but generally we can lay out design guidelines that are pretty consistent. When we get to a local neighborhood that has a context, there are these key attributes, the public realm, the streetscape, building articulation and materiality, bulk, you know, obviously when amassing and density, which are set by the approvals, other elements of context, which are vitally important to those neighborhoods. Also, a big piece of program is that each of these facilities is going to have community facilities and spaces within it. And the ground floor, we anticipate being very welcoming. So those aspects are where it's really important for us to get community input and that's what we're doing. To the first part of your question, we very much have been working to structure this process of community input and, sorry, general input and review of the design work so that we have multiple things happening for any given set of design guidelines. As I mentioned, we have a design advisory group, which we established with Chair Lago and are going to be running design guidelines by that group. That includes representatives of the borough presidents and of the Speaker of the City Council, in addition to city agencies. We're conducting workshops in the neighborhoods. We're meeting with the neighborhood advisory committees that were established during the master planning in ULP. We are heavily engaged with the borough presidents and the city council members directly. I think Beverly was mentioning example of something that, you know, already we've incorporated from that feedback and there have been many more of those things. So we anticipate that the community will really get a lot of opportunities to give us input and reactions to the design guidelines and the designs that we've been developing. In addition, this architectural peer review will similarly react to those design guidelines from their perspectives and give us a whole other set of perspectives that we can incorporate.
Sure. I thank you very much for that and that makes a lot of sense. I guess a question that arises from the response, which is very more specific to the program, and I understand completely that obviously there's a building and there's a certain program and that is mirrored in each of the sites that are being created. And I know you said that there may be like more of this bed in one than the other. The fact that they're all being constructed with the same number of beds, how does it get determined where there's a greater need for certain enhanced programming versus another if, for all intents and purposes, the numbers are equal? Is there?
Sure, Commissioner. I'm trying to think of a specific example. I mean, in general, and I was looking to my colleagues as well.
You mentioned therapeutic beds. You said that one may have more therapeutic beds than another. On what basis, if we're starting in this new era with an equal number of beds across four boroughs, that this borough gets added therapeutic beds or has a need for added therapeutic beds versus another?
Yeah. So and I'm actually going to double check. I may have misspoken. We may have the same number of therapeutic beds in each facility.
And not to get into the weeds on this, I just wondered if there was an analysis that certain boroughs had, because I know this is about, hopefully accomplishing the goal also of having people who are there being from their, as close to their home borough as possible. So it's not like you're moving, the goal is not to be moving people around, it's to have them as close to home as possible for their families and visitors and all of that. So I just wondered if there was a formula or was there sort of data that was supporting, well, in the Queens, we need extra of this versus not?
Yes. So I will say, and I will look to my colleagues in case there's anything they'll add to this, but the formula was developed and applied during the ULP process. So the projects that you approved, the bed count was developed based on the projection of average daily population.
Yes.
I'm not, we'll have to get back to you as to whether there is any refinement that will take place. I may have overstated the difference, for example, in therapeutic beds. I think that we generally have a uniform program that responds to the needs of the local population. To the extent that there is refinement of that, it will be with the Mayor's Office of Criminal Justice, Department of Corrections and Community Health Services based on their sense of local need. I don't know, would anyone add anything to that from our team? No.
And that makes perfect sense. I just, just in the context of the conversation, I wondered, since it was, there was a mention of what might, to me sounded like it could be different in one than the other, that how does that get determined in looking to the future?
Right.
And so it's, I appreciate any information, but it's, I understand the conversation we're having. Thank you. Thank you.
Commissioner Yedder.
Good afternoon. Just a quick question regarding like the RFQ process and the RFP process. To the degree that you have, the teams are somewhat self-forming, different firms come together, create a team in order to respond. To what degree do you have flexibility if you find, let's say, a strong design firm that has weak team members that you'd like to continue working with through the RFP process, but the rest of the team may not be up to snuff? And do you have flexibility to help them find other teams or help them continue in the process with other team members?
Yeah, thanks, Commissioner. I'm going to, at this point, ask Associate Commissioner Rebecca Klauff, who's responsible for the Borough Based Jails Program at DDC, to come up and respond to that.
Good afternoon. There really is not a lot of opportunity to change the players. The in-market period that Commissioner Torres Springer spoke of, we're going to be working with the team to pull out the best aspects of their design and together with the peer reviewers and the PDC input, try to push them towards a better solution. But with the rigorous review of their qualifications in the first portion, the RFQ into the RFP, we're going to take all of the firms and it gets reduced down to three. Those three get the RFP. So it's likely that if they don't have a strong architect or a strong design sense, that they're probably not going to make it into the next phase.
Thank you.
Other questions or Commissioner Ramperchat?
I have a few questions, actually. It's been a while since I've seen the last revised since City Council. I think they changed the heights of the actual building. What's the current height of the garage? How many stories is that? And the reason I ask is because I'm going to speak towards the pedestrian experience. When you had your workshops, when you ask people, what do they want? Do they understand the space that they're actually working with? And we're talking between the garage and the facility, correct? And then you had mentioned about Borough Hall, that park area. Is that something also you're looking to incorporate a design into Borough Hall's green space in the back there?
Beverly, you want to respond to that?
So the parking garage is going to be partly up to the design builder, but we are putting some constraints on how high it can be because the floor area ratio we need to meet goes against the whole site. And so we don't want, because the garage is coming first, we don't want them to absorb too much of the floor area ratio because some of that needs to be reserved for the jail. We expect the garage will probably go down some stories as well as up some stories, but probably more like seven or eight stories above. But keep in mind that garage floor plates, floor-to-floor plates are a lot smaller than a typical office building. I'm sorry, I didn't catch your other question.
Well, I was just curious in terms of the distance between the garage and the new facility, in terms of what is that space going to actually be like? Because you're talking about pedestrian experience and if I'm visiting that site, and I live there, I know the area very well, I know that, you know, and you know there's a lot of construction going on between the Van Wyk and along the Union Turnpike where the Jackie Robinson is. You know, I just don't know if there's actually going to be a lot of natural light that's going to actually be there. So I'm just curious, when you presented to the neighborhood or the community outreach that you did, do they understand the actual space that they're actually to give input on, what this is actually going to be like? Because I look at a lot of the renderings that are on the handout you gave here, and you know, I know that's not what you're proposing here because they only look like two-story buildings. This is, you're talking about probably an 18-story building and an eight-story structure, whatever it may be, 65 feet, 75 feet. That's a narrow corridor to work with. So do you know the distance between the buildings?
Yes. Well, the mandated portion is 30 feet between the garage and another structure, so 30 horizontal feet. The jail building is only about 10 to 12 stories. So it's got lowered during the ULP process, so it's, the total height maximum is 195 feet net of any rooftop mechanical. And then one of the things, you know, there's areas like that 30 feet between might actually be more of a pass-through type of area as people connect from other parts of the site. I'm thinking of the bridge across, but, oh, thank you. Yeah, the next one? Yeah, there. So we're kind of showing the line of a pedestrian path on the, yeah. And at the same time, as we've done what we're calling test fits, looking at, you know, how might this garage really work? Because we don't want to put something out to design builders that is not achievable. So we are just doing some basic test fits and, which will not be distributed to anybody. One of the things we're seeing is that we think there's a lot more opportunity for plaza, like a, how do I do the, advance this by one? Okay, thanks. There's an opportunity for a plaza expansion, so it's not just a pass-through area where we're showing the yellow, but actually to create more of an open space between the garage. And I don't know if I'm probably going into too much detail on this, but I will say that one of the factors we're taking into account is because they're in phases, is that the garage, whatever is placed, is going to be chewed up a little during construction. So we're actually looking at the overall facility designer to see how to have that all wrapped together into a cohesive experience for the community and for the neighbors that are passing through the area.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Well, thank you very much for the presentation and we look forward to the ongoing dialogue.
As do we. Thank you very much.
This is the review session of the New York City Planning Commission of Tuesday, February 18th, 2020. The time is 1:50 PM and a quorum is present. The first item on our agenda is a certification of a zoning map and zoning text amendments in Brooklyn Community District 12. Our presenter is Karina Liang.
This is a private application by Borough Park Realty for a zoning map change and zoning text amendment to facilitate the development of a five-story office building with approximately 15,900 square feet of commercial space in the Borough Park neighborhood of Brooklyn Community District 12. The red star on the map shows the project location near the southern boundary of Community District 12, just north of District 11. So this is the southern, or this is the area surrounding the proposed rezoning, which is outlined in blue and covers the western blockfront of 16th Avenue between 58th Street and 59th Street. The actual development site is just a portion of this rezoning area that's outlined in red. This is about a block away from a rezoning application that was just certified in January and is now in ULP at the community board. That proposed rezoning area in the application is outlined in yellow. So 16th Avenue and 60th Street are both main streets in this area with a width of 80 feet, making them wide streets under zoning. The area is served by two trains and two buses. There's a connected D and N train stop within a half mile to the west and then another N train stop to the south within a half mile. In terms of buses, there's also, the B9 bus is accessible one block south of the project site, or project area at 60th Street. That's the B9 bus, which runs between Bay Ridge and Kings Plaza. And then two blocks east, the B8 is accessible along 18th Avenue and that runs between Bay Ridge and Brownsville. Most of the surrounding buildings are low-rise residential, about two to three stories, though there are some taller buildings. Everything that's shaded in yellow is the rooftop of a building that's at least five stories. Generally, you're seeing these, these are multifamily apartment buildings along the avenues. So in the background, there's a cluster along 15th Avenue and then along 16th Avenue, you have the Maple Lanes development, south of the project area, about two blocks. That was, that's a six-story, about 140-unit complex that was facilitated by a 2013 rezoning. And then two blocks north of the project area, the taller building on 16th Avenue, is a public school that houses the See All Academy, which is a public K through eight school. school that houses the C All Academy, which is a public K through 8 school. So now looking at the land use and zoning of the area, you can see that north of 60th Street is dominated by lower-density residential uses, while south of 60th Street, you have a lot of light industrial and transportation-related uses. Then there's also a community facility throughout the entire area, and that generally is houses of worship and private schools. Along 16th Avenue around the project site itself, there's a varied mix of uses that include medical and professional offices, retail, a police station, a school, and residential. Moving north along 16th Avenue, there's a couple of blocks that are more residential. And then at 56th Street and northward, you have an active, 16th Avenue becomes an active neighborhood commercial corridor with local retail on the ground floor in two- to three-story buildings with residential above. In terms of zoning, the project area is currently zoned R5 with a C22 overlay. The underlying R5 district, which covers most of the surrounding area north of 60th Street, allows all residential uses up to 1.25 FAR and community facility uses at 2 FAR. Under optional R5 bulk provisions in this area, one to three-family homes are allowed to build up to 1.8 FAR in select sites. Building height in this district is limited to 40 feet with a 30-foot height cap for perimeter walls. And then when you have a C22 overlay added to the R5, you can, local commercial uses are allowed up to 1 FAR and must be located below any residential use in mixed buildings. Across from the site, a C81 district is mapped on that blockfront. And this district allows a range of commercial uses from local retail to automotive and heavy commercial uses at 1 FAR, but does not allow any residential uses. Other zoning nearby includes R6 to the north, and then to the south, you have R6A and M11. The applicant's proposing to map a C44A district, which would allow multi-story commercial use at 4 FAR and then residential and community facility uses at R7A bulk. So that's 4.6 FAR for residential with MIH and 4 FAR for community facility uses and buildings maybe up to 95 feet high with the street walls of up to 75 feet. So this is a closer look at the project area, which you can see in blue, and the development site that is shown in red. So the project area, as I said previously, is the entire western blockfront of 16th Avenue between 58th and 59th Street, and extends at 150 feet deep. So the entire area is currently zoned R5 with a C22 overlay. The applicant's proposing to map a C44A district along 16th Avenue, but only to a depth of 100 feet, and then to remove the C22 overlay from the remaining 50 feet of the project The project area covers 10 tax lots, shown here in white, and then the dashed yellow line shows the boundary of the proposed C44A district. I'll show the street views and discuss the lots further, but to provide an overview of the area that would be rezoned, C44A includes the development site and then two other lots that front on 16th Avenue, in addition to one lot that fronts on 58th Street. And then the other lots that would have the C22 overlay removed face on 58th and 59th So here we're looking at the development site itself, which is comprised of three 20-foot lots, each with a building that has a ground floor commercial space and two dwelling units above. The applicant has said that the units on lots 38 and 39 have been vacant since 2017, and on lot 40, the residential units have been vacant since 2018, and the commercial space has been empty since November 2019. The most previous or most recent tenant was a congregation that was temporarily occupying that space while their synagogue was being renovated. So the combined area, lot area for this development site is approximately 4,000 square feet, and the existing buildings have an area of approximately 9,700 square feet, or about 2.4 FAR, making them noncompliant with the existing zoning. Behind the buildings, you can see in picture C, there's a curb cut along 58th Street and then a side yard that's occasionally used for parking. Now, the other lots along 16th Avenue are seen here. We have lot 41, which is next to the development site, is a 40-foot-wide lot with an area of about 2,400 square feet and contains a two-unit residential building and then a side yard that's used for parking. The building itself is approximately 3,300 square feet or 1.4 FAR, making it noncompliant as well. Next to that, the 66th Police Precinct House is a two-story, 8,900-square-foot building on a 10,000-square-foot site. And then across the street, you can see one- and two-story commercial buildings across from 16th Ave. So going around the corner to 59th Street, we're looking at the two lots that would just have the C22 overlay removed. So lot 50 is a four-dwelling unit building that has a daycare in the center, or in the cellar, and this daycare, and then lot 49, sorry, is classified as vacant, but is used by the daycare in the building next door. Then along 58th Street, we will start with lot 37, which is adjacent to the side yard on the development site. So this is included in the proposed C44 area. This is a 3,600-square-foot lot with a 3,300-square-foot building that houses a mikva, and this was not assumed to change. Next door to this are two residential buildings currently with commercial zoning that would be removed in this application. So the proposed development would be a 61-foot-tall, five-story building that's about 16,000 square feet and just under 4 FAR. The applicant has told us that his company, Chartwell Pharmaceuticals, would occupy the building, relocating 35 employees from their location in Congers, New York, which is up in Rockland County, and then hire approximately 25 new employees from the area to handle data entry and administrative-type work. So the applicant has told us that the employees mostly live within the neighborhood, and the company itself is a generic drug manufacturer, and they would be keeping this production up in the Congers facility. The proposed building itself would be about 60 feet wide by 53 feet deep, and then they would keep a 13-foot side yard between themselves and the community facility building next door. At this time, the applicant believes that they'll be keeping the existing curb cut and using the side yard for occasional parking. So in order to facilitate this development, the applicant is proposing to rezone an R5 C22 area to C44A to a depth of 100 feet, and then remove the C22 overlay from the remaining 50-foot portion of the project area. So this would increase the allowed commercial FAR by three to allow 4 FAR, and then increase the residential FAR to 4.6 from 1.25, and increase the community facility FAR to four from two. Building height is currently limited 40 feet, but under this new zoning, the allowable building height would increase to 95 feet. The applicant is also preparing, is also proposing to map an MIH option 1 and 2 on the rezoned area. As I said, the project, the proposed project is not creating any residential area, so it's not subject to MIH. So these proposed actions would facilitate the development of a five-story, approximately 15,900-square-foot building, a commercial office building. I'll now take any questions.
Questions? Commissioner Kapeli.
You had mentioned that in some of the buildings, the apartments have been vacant since 2017. How did they become vacant? And were they regulated at any point in time?
I can definitely, I can ask the applicant about that. I don't believe these were regulated since there's only two units per building.
Okay.
Given their size, it's unlikely that they were regulated, but we can look into the status.
Yeah. Curious at how apartments sit vacant for three years in a city that has a housing crisis.
Other questions? Okay, then the application is certified.
The second item on our agenda, page 26, is a non-Eulerp authorization referral in the Bronx Community District 7. Making her first presentation to the commission is Lauren Harrison.
Good afternoon. This is an application by JELB Webster LLC that is centrally located in the Bronx within Community District 7. It is for an authorization to modify maximum building height in a mixed-use commercial and residential building, including a fresh food store at 2856 Webster Avenue in the Bedford Park neighborhood. There is also a related chair certification to certify that the proposed food store use would be a fresh food store. The proposed project area is bounded by Webster Avenue to the northwest, Bedford Park Boulevard to the northeast, and MTA Metro North Harlem Line tracks to the southeast. Notable land uses in the area consist of open space and institutional uses, such as the New York Botanical Garden and Fordham Hill, Fordham Rose Hill University Campus. The closest subway station to the site is along the BD line, stopping about a half-mile away on Bedford Park Boulevard and the Grand Concourse, and the Botanical Garden Station and Fordham Station on the Metro North Harlem Line are located to the northeast and southeast of the site. Additionally, the site is serviced by the BX41 and BX41 SBS line along Webster Avenue and provides connections to the hub and Williams Bridge in the Bronx. The surrounding area is predominantly comprised of a mix of residential and commercial buildings ranging between one and nine stories. Single-story commercial buildings and larger mixed-use residential and commercial buildings can be located, or can be seen along Webster Avenue and Bedford Park Boulevard, providing local retail, medical office, use, supermarkets, automotive repair, and parking facilities. Larger three-to-six-story multifamily elevator buildings are found on Decatur, while smaller one- and two-family residential buildings can be seen on smaller side streets. You can see southeast of the development site, along Southern Boulevard, is a nine-story multifamily elevator residential building as well. The proposed development site is mapped within a C45D zoning district, whose residential equivalent is the R7D district. This permits a maximum residential building height of 11 stories and 115 feet, when including affordable independent residences for seniors and a qualifying ground floor. The area was also mapped as a part of the food retail expansion to support health area known as Fresh in 2008, and more recently, it was rezoned as a part of the larger Webster Avenue rezoning in 2011. The proposed development advances the goals of this rezoning by contributing to a vibrant, inviting, and walkable residential-commercial corridor on Webster Avenue. So the proposed development would be constructed on the southwestern portion of a 53,300-square-foot zoning lot outlined here in blue. It's comprised of three tax lots, Lot 118, Lot 122, and Lot 128. This zoning lot has been owned by the New York Botanical Garden since 2008, and in 2013, the site was identified in EDC's Webster Avenue Vision Plan as a catalytic mixed-use development opportunity. This vision plan, along with the Webster Avenue rezoning, guided the New York Botanical Garden to issue an RFP for the site in 2016. This was for a mixed-use building with a hospitality, retail, and residential mix. The applicant, an affiliate of Douglasson Development, was chosen for that RFP. With the support of Councilmember Torres, HPD, and HDC, the applicant has entered into a land lease agreement with the New York Botanical Garden for an affordable housing mixed-use project that has since evolved into a two-phased development. So Lot 18, outlined in red, is the site of the proposed first development phase and fresh actions for this application. The lot has approximately 100 feet of frontage on Webster Avenue, and it currently contains a 15,600-square-foot one-story building. The front two-thirds of the building is currently vacant, but was formerly occupied by a laundromat and a restaurant, while the rear third of the building is used as a storage warehouse for the adjacent supermarket. On Lot 22 and Lot 28, it contains a one-story, 21,800-square-foot commercial building occupied by a supermarket and its accessory parking. The supermarket is expected to continue in operation while the proposed development is under construction and would ultimately move into the proposed fresh food store space upon completion. This means that the grocer would be legally committed to provide at least 500 square-feet of floor area that is dedicated to fresh meat, fruits, and vegetables, along with other floor area requirements. In the future, the applicant intends to develop the northern portion of the lot, of the zoning lot, with another affordable mixed-use development that includes an extension of the proposed fresh food store. This planned second development would be subject to future fresh land use action approval. The development site and the currently vacant frontage can be seen in photo number one. And in photo number two, you can see the adjacent lot with the active supermarket. Photo three is a view from the corner of Webster and Bedford, and you can see also the dedicated SBS bus lane on Webster that has a stop right across the street. Photo four is a view towards, a view on Bedford, towards the rear of the existing supermarket. Here you can see a strong elevation change east of Webster and towards the bridge going over the Metro North tracks. The proposed action would facilitate the development of a new 12-story mixed-use residential building with approximately 109,000 square feet. The proposed development would include 188 affordable senior dwelling units within approximately 9,000, 900, sorry, 96,100 square feet, and 12,800 square feet of a fresh food store on the ground floor. The fresh food store, as a part of the chair certification, would generate a floor, a floor area bonus. The authorization approved would allow a building height and story waiver, permitting an increase in max height from 115 feet and 11 stories to 130 feet and 12 stories. According to the applicant, the proposed height increase to 124 feet and 12 stories is necessary to provide a fresh food store on the ground floor and accommodate the floor area bonus to provide additional housing. With the approval of the authorization, 16 additional units would be provided. With the approval of the chair certification, it would ensure the fresh food store in perpetuity and provide 34 additional units total as compared to an Azerite scenario. As a whole, this development proposal advances the community-informed and supported processes and goals of the Webster Avenue rezoning and Webster Avenue Vision Plan. And for reference, here are the findings for that height authorization. Any questions?
Questions from the commission? Okay, then we will refer this out to the community board for 45 days.
The third item on the agenda, page 48, is a pre-hearing review of a UDAP designation and disposition of city-owned property in Brooklyn Community District 8. Our presenter is Amy Jin.
This is an application by the Department of Housing Preservation and Development, HPD, to request the designation and approval of an urban development action area and disposition of city-owned land. This application would facilitate the development of a new eight-story building with 44 affordable units at 1559 to 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 at 1559 to 1563 Prospect Place. The development site is located in Weeksville, Brooklyn, Community District 8. The surrounding area is largely comprised of residential and institutional uses. The surrounding area, including the project site, are zoned R6. R6 is a non-contextual medium-density residential district that allows residential and community facility uses under both Height Factor and Quality Housing regulations. Under the Quality Housing option, residential developments have a maximum FAR of 2.2 with a maximum base height of 65 feet and building height of 70 feet. Developments containing affordable independent residences for seniors, AERS, have a maximum FAR of 3.9. Maximum base heights for AERS buildings is 65 feet and maximum building height is 80 feet, which increases to 85 feet with a qualifying ground floor. The surrounding area is well-served by public transportation and located within the transit zone. The 2, 3, 4A, and C subway stations are a half-mile away from the project site, and the area is also served by the B15, 45, 47, and 65 buses. The development site is comprised of three interior lots, 90, 91, and 92 totaling approximately 8,000 square feet with 75 feet of total frontage on Prospect Place, which is a 70-foot-wide street. The block is bounded by Ralph Avenue to the east, Buffalo Avenue to the west, and St. Mark's Avenue to the north. Lot 91 and 92 received approval for the disposition of city-owned land in the 1980s, but the sites were never developed and have remained vacant under city ownership since. As you can see from this aerial, the surrounding area is characterized primarily by low-to-medium-density residential buildings with a mix of two-to-three-story row houses and four-story multifamily residential buildings. Additionally, the surrounding area includes local institutional, commercial, and public facility uses. Of note, in this aerial here, number one is Weeksville Heritage Center and the historic Hunter Fly Road Houses. Number two is the Nycha Kingsborough Campus. And number three is the former St. Mary's Hospital, which is currently under construction, being converted into a nursing home. This is a view of the project area from Prospect Place. These are views of the properties adjacent to the project area. Both buildings on either side rise to a height of 40 feet. And lastly, here is a view looking directly across the street from the project area on Prospect Place. As you can see, there's a mix of three-to-four-story residential buildings. The proposed development consists of the new construction of an eight-story building with a total of 44 units of affordable rental housing plus one superintendent's unit. Of the 44 dwelling units, 26 will be AERS units, and there will be units set aside for formerly homeless households. The proposed development is expected to contain a mix of studio, one- and two-bedroom rental units, approximately 3,500 square feet of outdoor recreational and garden space, and a community room on the ground floor. The building will be developed under Quality Housing regulations and would have a total residential floor area of approximately 22,000 zoning square feet and an FAR of 3.81 at a base height of 60 feet, followed by a setback of 16 feet to rise to a maximum building height of 80 feet. This development is a part of HPD's Neighborhood Construction Program. This program funds the new construction of infill affordable rental housings and selects sponsors through a Request for Qualifications process to purchase city-owned land. The development team selected for this project are Beechwood Homes and Settlement Housing Fund. I want to point out in this render that the entire project is both the silver building and then the one beside it that's two floors higher. And then the silver part isn't set forward. There's a gap between the building on the left and the silver building. And then the brown portion of the building is actually set back a little bit from the other buildings. In order to facilitate the proposed project, HPD is requesting a designation and approval of an urban development action area and disposition of city-owned land. On December 5, 2019, Community Board 8 held a public hearing, and on December 12, recommended to approve this application. On December 10, 2019, the Borough President held a public hearing, and on February 6, 2020, recommended to approve the application. The Borough President further calls on the co-developers to incorporate resilient and sustainable energy and stormwater practices in the project design. Thank you. I'm happy to take any questions.
Questions? Commissioner Dweck.
Thank you. Just a positive comment on the use of the AERS FAR for the elderly component. Happy to see that.
Other questions? Commissioner Marine.
Is that why there's two separate buildings? Because it's two separate funding sources and two building types?
No, no. It's one joint project with one entrance. They're just two developers together who are working in partnership.
Thank you.
Other questions? Then we'll see this out of public hearing tomorrow. Thank you.
The fourth item on the agenda, page 77, is a pre-hearing review of zoning map and zoning text amendments, special permit and city map amendment in Brooklyn Community District 7. Connie Chan is our presenter.
Good afternoon. The applicant, 110 Bush Terminal Owner LP and 1920 Bush Terminal Owner LP, is seeking a zoning text amendment to establish a new special industry-city district and create a new special permit, a zoning map amendment to map the special district and change an M31 district to an M24 district, a special permit to modify use, bulk, and other requirements within the newly-created special district, and a city map change to demap a portion of a street. These actions would facilitate the renovation and reactivation of a complex of 16 historic buildings and the construction of three new buildings that would contain a total of up to 6.6 million square feet of industrial, commercial, and community facility uses. This application was certified on October 28, 2019, and the public hearing is scheduled for February 19, 2020. The project is located in the Sunset Park neighborhood of Brooklyn in Community District 7, the location shown above. Here's an aerial map that shows the project area outlined in yellow. You can see the elevated Guanis Expressway that runs along the eastern boundary of the project area directly above Third Avenue. Third Avenue and the Guanis Expressway separate the industrial neighborhood to the west from a mix of lighter industrial uses, commercial, residential, and community facility uses to the east. Some of the major developments in the surrounding area include the South Brooklyn Marine Terminal, directly across Second Avenue on the waterfront; Liberty View Industrial Plaza, directly to the north of the project area; the city-owned Bush Terminal to the south along the waterfront; and a Costco grocery store that's located in between the two building clusters that comprise the project area. The bulk of the project area and the area to the west and the south are located in an M31 zoning district. South of the project area, between Second Avenue and Third Avenue, is an M12 district. There is a small portion of the project area along Third Avenue between 36th and 37th Streets that's located in this M12 district. The western terminuses of the mapped portions of 32nd through 35th Streets are located at varying lengths west of Third Avenue. The prolongations of these street ends that actually connect to Second Avenue are privately-owned unmapped driveways. This is a diagram showing the project area, which consists of three different components. In red is the current Industry City complex, all of which is owned by the applicant. In purple are the properties that the applicant intends to acquire and incorporate into the proposed development. And in orange are the properties affected by the proposed actions that are not part of the proposed development. Within Industry City, the two building clusters are known as the Finger Buildings, located to the north, and the 39th Street Buildings to the south. In total, this area comprises a lot area of 1.29 million square feet and a total of 5.3 million square feet of floor area for a total FAR of 3.9. So I'll show an aerial photo of the Finger Buildings. Finger Buildings 1 through 9 are six-story structures that rise to 85 feet in height. Building 10, which is located at Third Avenue and 32nd Street on the left side of the image, is 12 stories tall and rises to 170 feet. Photos 1, 2, and 3 show images of some of the publicly-accessible courtyards located in between the Finger Buildings. And photo 4 shows an elevated walkway that has been built parallel to the Finger Buildings that provides 88 access and allows pedestrian traffic to be separated from vehicular traffic and loading activities. The left two photos are views of the project area along Second Avenue, and the right two photos show views along Third Avenue. Here are some photos that show the views on the streets between the Finger Buildings, between Second and Third Avenues. And here are some views that show the perspective from standing at kind of Third Avenue underneath the Guanis Expressway, facing east towards the residential kind of upland portion of the neighborhood. So now we'll take a look at the 39th Street Buildings, again, the building cluster to the south. These buildings are predominantly eight-story structures that rise to 115 feet in height. The top two photos show views along the 39th Street frontage. In the lower right is the end of 39th Street, directly facing Building 24, which is currently vacant. And the lower left is the view south along First Avenue from 39th Street. Here, photos 1, 2, and 3 show different views of Buildings 19 and 20. And photo 4 is a view facing west towards Buildings 22, 23, and 26, located on the west side of First Avenue. In 2013, the owners of Industry City launched an initiative to rehabilitate the buildings and activate Industry City, which is the largest privately-owned industrial complex in New York City. Since 2013, the number of jobs has increased from 1,900 people at 150 businesses to over 8,000 people at more than 450 companies. This is an approximate breakdown of the existing mix of uses at Industry City by square footage. Approximately 50% of the existing square footage is vacant or occupied by storage and warehouse uses. So going back to the project area, in purple, the two areas shaded in both building clusters in purple, again, are the properties that the applicant intends to acquire and incorporate into the proposed development. There are six tax lots located on Third Avenue between 36th and 37th Streets that would be acquired and incorporated into the site of what is proposed to be the new Gateway Building. On 39th Street, there's one tax lot located in between First Avenue and Building 1920. That would be part of the proposed Building 21. It currently contains a three-story manufacturing building. The applicant seeks to create a center of industrial, commercial, and institutional employment, which they call an innovation district, an ecosystem comprised of a range of businesses involved in every step of the making process, from research and development to design and engineering, as well as the manufacturing of goods. Innovation economy businesses make products that fall into a variety of sectors, which include art and design, film and television, retail, fashion, technology, and food. The full vision for the proposed development involves the rehabilitation of 16 existing buildings and the new construction of three additional buildings with a total lot area of 1.3 million square feet. This would include up to 6.6 million square feet of development and an overall FAR of 4.97. The proposed development is projected to support over 15,000 jobs. In addition to the office, retail, art and production studios, and manufacturing uses, which are the core innovation economy uses that already exist at Industry City today, the applicant seeks to broaden the range of uses to include the following: colleges and universities, libraries, museums, and non-commercial art galleries; hotels; a wider range of retail and services; physical culture establishments; and distilleries. Retail uses would be limited to a total of 900,000 square feet and would generally be restricted to the first and second floors to help activate the streetscape and create a pedestrian-friendly environment. The proposed community facility uses, which are colleges and universities, and libraries, museums, and non-commercial art galleries, would be capped at a total square footage of 625,000 square feet. Two hotels, each restricted to a specific location within each of the building clusters, would be capped at a total square footage of 287,000 square feet. All other uses would be permitted to locate throughout the proposed development. The existing buildings are proposed to remain as-is with three new buildings to be constructed. New Building 11 is an L-shaped building with frontage along Second Avenue and 32nd Street. It would contain approximately 495,000 square feet of floor area. The portion of the building with frontage on Second Avenue would rise to 170 feet in height and 13 stories. The portion of the building with frontage on 32nd Street would contain five stories. The Gateway Building would be located on Third Avenue between 36th and 37th Streets. This building would rise to 12 stories and 170 feet in height and would occupy approximately 182,000 square feet. One hotel with 223 rooms would be located in this building. Both the Gateway Building and Building 11 would form anchor points at the northwest and southeast corners of the Finger Buildings that would mimic the bulk of the existing Building 10, which rises to 170 feet without a setback. New Building 21 would be located between Buildings 19 and 20 and First Avenue. It would contain 10 stories and rise to 150 feet in height and would include approximately 781,000 square feet of floor area. One hotel with 197 rooms would be located in this building. Here's a diagram showing the buildings proposed, as well as the intended uses and where they're located. Retail uses are shown in red, again, restricted to the first and second floors. Two hotels are shown in dark purple, again, located in the Gateway Building and Building 21. One or more college and university uses are shown in blue and are contemplated to be located in New Building 11 and Building 9. And all other uses are shown in light purple are envisioned to be located on the upper floors throughout all buildings. Parking is shown in gray and would be accommodated primarily within two parking garages, one in New Building 11 and one in New Building 21. The parking facility in New Building 11 is anticipated to include between 334 and 384 parking spaces. And the garage in New Building 21 would include between 1,350 and 1,600 parking spaces. In order to facilitate the proposed development, the applicant is requesting a zoning text amendment to establish a new special industry-city district, a zoning map amendment to map the newly-created special district and change an M31 district to an M24 district, a special permit to modify use, bulk, and other requirements within the special district, and a city map change to demap a portion of a street. The zoning text amendment would create a new special district that establishes use regulations and creates a new special permit to modify use and bulk regulations subject to findings and a site plan. First, I'll speak to the use regulations. M1 performance standards would apply, and unenclosed sidewalk cafes would be permitted. The new CPC special permit, again, would allow the commission to modify use and bulk regulations. There are a number of uses that could be permitted through this special permit. This would include schools with no living or sleeping accommodations, colleges and universities, libraries, museums, and non-commercial art galleries; hotels; physical culture establishments; distilleries; and all retail and service uses in the use groups shown here. And a point of clarification about the retail and service uses. All uses within Use Groups 7B, 8B, and 14A would be permitted in the underlying zoning district. However, there are some uses within those circled above, 6A, 6C, 9A, 10A, and 12B, that would only be permitted through the special permit. These include a number of retail establishments that exceed 10,000 square feet in size per establishment. Again, all retail uses would be capped at a total of 900,000 square feet. And once the total amount of retail hits 120,000 square feet across the special permit area, a parking requirement of one parking space per 500 square feet of retail would be triggered. And just a reminder that this parking requirement would be triggered not only by the creation of new floor area but also by the conversion of existing floor area to retail or service uses. In terms of bulk, the special permit would allow for modifications of all underlying bulk regulations other than FAR. The second action the applicant is seeking is a zoning map amendment that would map the newly-created special industry-city district and change an M31 district to an M24 district. M24 districts permit an FAR of 5.0 for all permitted manufacturing and commercial uses. Height and setback regulations permit a maximum base height before a required setback of the lesser of 85 feet or six stories with overall height governed by a sky-exposure plane. The third action is a special permit that the applicant is seeking for use and bulk relief across the special permit area. And there are four development scenarios contained within the special permit, referred to as large-scale development assemblages A, B, C, and D. This is a diagram showing the area of Assemblage A. The area in gray, again, represents the extent of that area. All of the existing Industry City complexes shown in the lighter gray color, and the proposed new buildings are shown in the darker gray. So this incorporates all of the existing tax lots that the applicant currently owns, where Industry City is located today. Assemblage D represents the applicant's full vision for the proposed development, and it includes all of the properties that the applicant intends to acquire and incorporate into the proposed development in the future. Because the applicant does not have a clear timeline for the acquisition of properties they do not yet own, two additional development scenarios... they do not yet own, two additional development scenarios account for only one of the two parcels being acquired. Assemblage B includes the extent of Assemblage A plus the Gateway parcel only. And Assemblage C includes the extent of large-scale development Assemblage A plus the Building 21 parcel only. If the proposed actions are approved, large-scale development Assemblage A would be in effect. If and when additional properties are acquired in the future, the applicant would have to come back, prove ownership of those parcels, and seek a chairperson certification regarding that ownership. At the time that that chair certification is issued, large-scale development Assemblage B, C, or D would replace large-scale development Assemblage A. The special permit that the applicant is seeking would modify underlying use and bulk regulations of the following sections of the zoning resolution. The first two sections relate to use. The special permit the applicant is seeking would allow for the following uses: colleges and universities, libraries, museums, and noncommercial art galleries, hotels, and all retail and service uses in Use Groups 6A, 6C, 9A, 10A, and 12B, physical culture establishments, and distilleries. There are a set of general findings that apply to all use modifications, as well as a set of specific findings that apply to Use Group 3A community facility uses or Use Group 5 hotels. These are the sections of the zoning resolution where modifications of bulk regulations are being requested through the special permit. Bulk modifications would permit floor area to be transferred across the four zoning lots without regard to zoning lot lines. This floor area would be subject to contextual zoning envelopes that would allow for future enlargements of the existing buildings, as well as the construction of the proposed new buildings. Existing buildings are shown in gray, and the boundaries of the zoning envelopes are the solid black lines. And the shaded yellow areas represent locations where new floor area would be permitted. These contextual envelopes would generally allow the Finger Buildings to be expanded up to 25 feet above their existing roof heights after a setback. The two exceptions are for New Building 11 and the New Gateway Building, which are outlined in red. These buildings would be allowed to rise up to 170 feet in height without a setback, mirroring Building 10. So this is the diagram showing Assemblages B and D, which includes the Gateway parcel. And this is the diagram for Assemblage A and C, which does not include the Gateway These are the contextual envelopes for the 39th Street buildings. These envelopes would generally allow existing buildings to expand up to 35 feet above their existing roof heights, up to a maximum of 150 feet after a required 20-foot setback at a base height of 120 feet. New Building 21 is outlined in red, and this is the envelope for Assemblages C and D. And here are the envelopes for Assemblage A and B. These contextual envelopes would require relief from yard regulations and heightened setback regulations. Relief is sought in order to bring existing buildings into compliance as they encroach into required yards or into the required setbacks and sky-exposure plane. Relief would also allow for vertical expansions of existing buildings or for new buildings to be built. This is a diagram that shows the location of the requested bulk modifications for the Finger Buildings. The yard waivers are shown in purple, and the heightened setback waivers are shown in yellow. So this diagram is for Assemblages A and C, that does not include the Gateway parcel. And this is the same diagram for Assemblage B and D. Again, the same diagram for the 39th Street buildings, with the yard waivers shown in purple and the heightened setback waivers shown in yellow for Assemblage A and B and C and D. There are a number of findings for bulk modifications that relate to the streetscape, existing buildings, and character, access to light and air, and distribution of bulk. The fourth action the applicant is seeking is a city map change that would eliminate 40th Street between First and Second Avenues, which is shown in the dotted blue line. An EIS was conducted, and a notice of completion for the draft EIS was issued on October 25, 2019. Significant adverse impacts were identified with respect to the categories shown above. Mitigation measures are identified in the DEIS and will be explored further in the final environmental impact statement, or FEIS. In summary, the applicant is seeking a zoning text amendment, a zoning map amendment, a special permit, and a city map change to facilitate a mixed-use development comprised of up to 6.6 million square feet of industrial, commercial, and community facility uses in Sunset Park, Brooklyn, Community District 7. There were a number of questions posed when this project was certified on October 28, and I'll share some of the responses that have been provided by the applicant on the following topics. First, a question was asked about learnings from other innovation economy districts and their application here. The applicant will speak in more detail at the public hearing, but there are a number of examples in the U.S. of innovation districts that involve traditional and heavy manufacturing and warehouse uses, evolving into smaller-scale niche and advanced manufacturing that blends industries not generally associated with manufacturing, such as film and television, production, design, fashion, engineering, and biotech. Some examples include the Philadelphia Navy Yard, the Boston Innovation District, Mission Bay in San Francisco, East Baltimore, and Midtown Atlanta. These districts typically integrate academic institutions with R&amp;D and lab uses, office and co-working space, hotels, retail, and open space, while creating local workforce development opportunities. Some of the key components of these innovation districts include collaborations between businesses and academic institutions, the provision of amenity, community, and open spaces that allow for networking and community building, and the ability to both reuse existing buildings and build ground-up modern facilities to meet the needs of modern businesses. There was a question regarding two of the specific use categories and some of the associated job characteristics. The two use categories were manufacturing and artisanal manufacturing and studio, with an ask to kind of break those down in further detail. With regards to the manufacturing category, existing manufacturing tenants occupy approximately 19% of the square footage at Industry City and are comprised of use groups in 16A, 17B, and 18. The approximate square footage percentages of each of these use groups within the manufacturing category is shown here, with some examples of specific types of uses that are present at Industry City today. The existing artisanal manufacturing and studio tenants occupy 10% of the floor area at Industry City and are comprised of use groups 9A, 10A, and 11A. The approximate square footage percentages of each of these use groups is shown here, again, with some examples of specific types of uses present at Industry City today. In terms of educational attainment, the applicant shared results of a 2017 tenant survey summarizing the highest level of educational attainment of workers at Industry City. On the left, 37% of workers have a bachelor's degree and 11% have a master's degree or above. Some of the common occupations that were associated with workers with this level of educational attainment include engineers, architects, editors, and creative directors. In the upper right, 11% of the workers have less than a high school degree, and 22% have a high school degree or equivalent. Some of the common occupations associated with workers in these two categories include assemblers, painters, and finishers, and bakers. In the lower right, 18% of workers have some college or an associate's degree. Common occupations for workers in this category include software developers, graphic designers, and production assistants. In terms of wages, based on the same tenant survey, here's a summary of the average annual wages by educational attainment for workers at Industry City. The next question had to do with specific community facility partners. At this point in time, there is no formal agreement with an educational or other community facility partner. However, the applicant has been in ongoing discussions with both public and private colleges and universities about locating or relocating some of their academic components at Industry City. More information was requested about the Innovation Lab as well. This currently occupies a 7,500-square-foot space, and the partner organizations that run the Innovation Lab include Opportunities for a Better Tomorrow, Brooklyn Workforce Innovations, the Center for Family Life, CUNY City Tech, and the Southwest Brooklyn Development Corporation. Since launching four years ago, over 1,600 people have received services through the Innovation Lab, including connections to jobs at Industry City and elsewhere. Industry City has publicly committed to continuing to operate and to expand the Innovation Lab subsequent to approval of the proposed actions. The details of this commitment are still being worked out with community stakeholders at this time. A question was asked about why the amount of parking that was provided, how that number was arrived at. Those numbers came out of the environmental review, which I will explain at very high level. The environmental review analyzed the increment between the no-action scenario and the with-action scenario. The no-action scenario describes what would occur in the absence of the proposed actions. And the with-action describes the full build-out of the project with the proposed actions. The no-action scenario included 600 parking spaces, as this is the number of parking spaces that serves Industry City today. This is comprised of 127 surface spaces located at Industry City, as well as 473 parking spaces that Industry City leases at the adjacent South Brooklyn Marine Terminal, which are well utilized. So the 600 is the baseline number for parking. The environmental review projected incremental demand for parking between the no-action and the with-action of between 1,072 and 1,367 spaces, depending on whether it was a weekday or a weekend. So the total number of spaces in the proposed development, which is between 1,800 and 2,100, accounts for the 600, those baseline parking spaces, as well as the additional incremental spaces that were projected. So the parking requirement, which is one space per 500 square feet of retail, also matches with that number. So, for example, if there is 900,000 square feet of retail, which is the cap of what's being proposed, that would equal about 1,400 parking spaces. And so that 1,400 plus the existing baseline 600 equals kind of the proposed range for the entire development. With regards to the applicant's approach to sustainability, adaptive reuse is the largest component of the sustainability approach for this proposal. The focus on restoring the 16 existing buildings provides significant offsets of new materials that would be required if new construction were pursued and would also generate substantial air quality impacts from demolition. The applicant has invested over $400 million since 2013 on basic infrastructure upgrades. Their proposal involves 15,000 new energy-efficient windows. The applicant is more than halfway complete in the effort to replace all of the windows throughout the campus in conjunction with the building re-tenanting initiatives. New boiler vacuum systems have been installed in all buildings, except for Building 24, which is currently vacant. This has resulted in a 50% reduction in natural gas consumption. Regarding electrical infrastructure, historically, electrical distribution systems ran through the basements of all of the buildings. This infrastructure was damaged or destroyed in Superstorm Sandy, and over the last 70 years, over 50% of the electrical distribution system has been modernized and moved to the rooftops to mitigate the risks associated with future floods. This new overhead distribution has also reduced the line loss associated with below-grade In terms of local sourcing and materials and services, Industry City has spent $100 million at Brooklyn businesses, most of which are located in the communities directly surrounding Industry City, both supporting small business and reducing travel for goods and services. Over five acres of publicly-accessible green spaces have been provided that improve site porosity and air quality. In terms of floodproofing, the first floor of Building 24, which is the building at the end of 39th Street closest to the waterfront, is substantially below flood elevation. When that building is redeveloped, it would be wet-floodproofed, which means it would be designed to flood in a storm event by limiting the first floor to temporary uses that could be removed. All other buildings have first floors that are less than two feet below flood levels, and upon full build-out of the project, the applicant anticipates that all of the buildings will comply with Appendix G of the building code. And lastly, offshore wind. Through a joint venture with the Red Hook Container Terminal, Industry City, in partnership with the New York City Economic Development Corporation and NYSERTA, is redeveloping the adjacent South Brooklyn Marine Terminal as a port to service the offshore wind industry, which is anticipated to create 500 green jobs. A number of the offshore wind companies involved at SBMT will lease space at Industry City and will collaborate with the applicant's local workforce development initiatives. Going back to the questions, there was a question around parcel acquisition and construction phasing. At the current time, none of the parcels have been acquired or are under contract to be acquired yet. Regarding construction phasing, the applicant anticipates that re-tenanting of the existing floor area would continue to occur steadily. New construction will be determined largely by when tenant interest in new square footage is confirmed, which is difficult to predict in advance. However, it is assumed that Building 11 would be constructed first, since no property acquisition would be needed to do so. Following Building 11, Building 21 is anticipated to be the next building constructed, followed by the Gateway Building. Subsequent to the approval of the proposed actions, the applicant anticipates re-tenanting and new construction to occur from project approval through 2027. Regarding impact to the Brooklyn Queens Expressway, per the environmental review, the project would result in traffic impacts to the northbound Guanis Expressway during two periods. In the weekday AM period, speeds would reduce from about 30 miles per hour to 20 miles per hour between 40th and 49th Streets. And in the weekday midday period, speeds would be maintained at 36 miles per hour, but the density of vehicles would trigger an impact. Neither of these impacts would be mitigable due to the geometric constraints of the expressway. Regarding the First Avenue rail, the line is owned by the Port Authority of New York, New Jersey, and operated by New York, New Jersey Rail. Trains transport recyclable materials to and from the waterfront at 65th Street and the Sims Recycling Facility, which is located on the 29th Street Pier at SBMT. Trains typically run one to two times per week in the mornings, around 6:00 AM, at a speed of approximately 5 miles per hour. There are typically three people on the train to ensure that there are no obstructions. In addition, there is usually a car escort in front of the train to ensure that any drivers along the path are aware that a train is approaching. And finally, there was a question about the residential units along Third Avenue in the Gateway parcel. There are an estimated 26 residents living in the eight dwelling units within the Gateway parcel. The applicant states that according to city records, these units are not rent-regulated, and therefore, rent and AMI information for those households was not publicly available. I'll now provide agency responses to some of the other questions that were posed by the commission at certification. There was a question about the transportation improvements that the city is either in process of or planning for in the project area or surrounding area. So there are a number of transportation improvements that the city is initiating, which are listed here and I'll show on a map as well. So first, the Brooklyn Waterfront Greenway is a bicycle and pedestrian path that will connect Greenpoint to Bay Ridge, and that has been partially constructed mostly in the north. Construction of the segment along Second Avenue between 29th and 39th Street is expected to begin in 2021. Separately, Industry City has been in discussion with EDC and DOT regarding accommodating a portion of the Greenway through one of the 39th Street buildings to facilitate the route along the waterfront. Those discussions are ongoing. Safety and streetscape improvements, including curb extensions and median-tip extensions, are currently under construction at 36th Street and Third Avenue underneath the elevated Guanis Expressway. The implementation of metered parking underneath the Guanis Expressway from 32nd Street to 43rd Street has begun. This initiative will better organize the movement of pedestrians and vehicles underneath the expressway. A redesign of Fourth Avenue will include the implementation of bike lanes, raised and planted medians, curb and sidewalk extensions, ADA ramp and signal upgrades, and street furniture. Partial funding has been secured, with more anticipated to come. Department of Transportation's Upland Connectors Initiative has resulted in investments that were completed in 2019 on 43rd and 44th Streets between Fifth Avenue and First Avenue to improve pedestrian connectivity from the upland residential neighborhood to the waterfront. These included the installation or improvement of pedestrian curb cuts to be ADA-accessible and the painting of bike lanes. There are a number of roadway reconstructions that include new roadway layouts, paving, sidewalk, curbs, light, signage, signals, pavement markings, street landscaping and furniture, and removal of abandoned railroad tracks and cobblestones that are focused on key intersections and corridors in and around the project area. Construction is anticipated to begin in the spring of 2020, focused on the following four areas: the intersection at 39th Street and Second Avenue, the intersection of 43rd Street and First Avenue, the intersection of 39th Street and Third Avenue, and Second Avenue between 39th and 41st Street. As I mentioned when this project was certified, the Economic Development Corporation is leading the redevelopment of Bush Terminal, which is directly adjacent to Industry City to the south, for the Made in New York initiative. That plan will include streetscape and circulation updates. The 36th Street subway station on Fourth Avenue, which provides access to the D, N, and R subway trains, is in the MTA's capital plan for 2020 to 2024 for ADA accessibility in both the north and southbound directions. Additionally, EDC recently issued a draft EIS for the expansion of the citywide ferry service that shows a potential future ferry stop at Bush Terminal two blocks south of Industry City. This area was identified as an opportunity to serve an important job center in northern Sunset Park, which includes the Made in New York initiative at Bush Terminal, the reactivation... Sunset Park, which includes the Made in New York Initiative at Bush Terminal, the reactivation of the South Brooklyn Marine Terminal, as well as Industry City. Therefore, EDC is keeping it open as an option for future expansion of the South Brooklyn Route. And finally, the MTA has recently completed the first step in the Brooklyn Bus Network redesign process, which is the report on existing conditions. The next step is to release a draft of a new bus network that reflects existing conditions and public input, which is anticipated to be issued during the second quarter of 2020. There was a question about other similar private applications that might help to put this application into context. This project is very unique, and that is an extremely large collection of properties that is primarily adaptive reuse, all under single ownership, with manufacturing uses as an important component of the proposal. And so this is certainly something that is unique, and we haven't seen a lot of similar applications. One of the trends that we have generally seen over the last few decades throughout the city is that loft buildings in M districts have been converted over time to commercial uses as of right. In some cases, these conversions have included some light industrial uses, in addition to commercial uses such as retail and office space. Examples of this can be found in Long Island City, in North Brooklyn, and in East Williamsburg. Although planners in 1961 thought that loft buildings were obsolete for modern businesses, in fact, we've seen that they have proven to be highly flexible and adaptable to a wide variety of users as the economy continues to diversify and technologies change how businesses operate. Some examples of large-scale as-of-right loft conversions in M districts in Brooklyn include the Dumbo Heights and Panorama Developments in Dumbo. These are five building complexes with a total of approximately 2 million square feet of space that were formerly used by the Jehovah's Witnesses for industrial and commercial uses. In recent years, these complexes have been adaptively reused for commercial office and retail. So we have not seen private applications at this scale of what's being proposed at Industry City that have proposed more flexibility in terms of uses coupled with restrictions on the types, amounts, and locations of potential uses. Next, there was a question regarding the structure of this application with regards to what's codified in the special district versus the special permit. And while there's no standard template that guides this division, there were two main reasons that the majority of provisions in this application were codified in the special permit. First, because of the scale and complexity of the proposal, codifying the provisions primarily within one set of documents would facilitate enforcement by the Department of Buildings. When the applicant goes to file building permits, the Department of Buildings will have to consult with all of the documents that contain use and bulk restrictions. Having all of those restrictions and regulations codified primarily within one place, rather than being split between the text and the drawings, will facilitate enforcement. Second, a special permit has associated findings that the applicant must address. The special permit, therefore, allows the Commission to review these findings and make a determination upon the initial special permit application. Subsequently, if changes are made to a project, the applicant would have to come back to the Commission for modifications to the special permit and show how they still meet the findings. And this would not necessarily be the case with special district texts. So ultimately, the special permit mechanism allows for a more fine-grained approach that provides more certainty about what can happen over time. There was a question about the permitting and enforcement of the MX District use separation. So as a recap, the applicant proposed a mechanism to separate their community facility and hotel uses from the heavier commercial and manufacturing uses. That was based on the existing MX District regulations that separate residential uses from the heavier uses. So the proposed mechanism, again, precludes kind of co-location of the more sensitive uses with the heavier uses if those heavier uses release emissions that would have a measurable effect on the surrounding uses. So an example of a kind of use that would qualify would be a spray booth, or if uses store significant quantities of hazardous materials on-site. In terms of process, when a building is filed, a building permit is filed with DOB, in order to mix those uses, it must include a certification by a licensed architect or engineer that there are no manufacturing or commercial uses present that meet specific criteria regarding emissions and hazardous materials. There are a number of buildings that have mixed residential and industrial uses in existing MX districts. There are a few examples in the Dutch Kill Sub District in Long Island City in particular. These buildings generally have ground-floor contractors and wholesale businesses with residential uses above. DCP staff have consulted with the Department of Buildings and are not aware of any issues or concerns related to the enforcement mechanism for this provision. And finally, there was a question about the difference between M1 and M2 performance standards. So to recap, a majority of the project area is proposed to be rezoned to an M2 district, which would impose M2 performance standards. However, the special district regulations would impose M1 performance standards, which are more stringent in some cases. Performance standards govern noise, vibration, smoke and other particulate matter, odorous matter, toxic or noxious materials, radiation hazards, fire and explosive hazards, humidity, and heater glare for uses in use groups 11A, 16, 17, and 18. M1 and M2 performance standards have different thresholds for noise, vibration, smoke, and other particulate matter. For other potential nuisances that are regulated through performance standards, the requirements are the same. However, it's important to note that many potential nuisances that are addressed through performance standards are also regulated through other environmental and health codes. And where those other rules are more stringent, they supersede the performance standards that exist in zoning. For example, the noise code and the air pollution control code, which are enforced by the Department of Environmental Protection, are more stringent than performance standards. Over the last two years, Community Board Seven organized over 25 public engagements, including town halls, public hearings, community meetings, speak-outs, and workshops, in order to engage in a comprehensive review of the Industry City proposal. Community Board Seven held a public hearing on December 9th and 11th, and on January 15th, the full board voted as follows. No position was taken on the zoning text amendment and the zoning map amendment. And for the special permit and the city map change, the board voted to disapprove with modifications and conditions shown above. There were seven key issues identified by the board included in their response in order to provide context for their recommendation. Within each of these issue areas, the board puts forth specific modifications or conditions, some of which are addressed to the applicant, and some of which are addressed to the city or other entities. All modifications are included in your briefing package, but I will summarize these issues and modifications at a high level. Issue number one is immigration and identity. The board provided an overview of the role that Sunset Park plays as a gateway neighborhood for immigrants, and emphasized the diversity of the neighborhood, which concludes a variety of businesses that are typically small storefronts or industrial operations owned by local residents. The board requested that the applicant publicly commit to support the neighborhood's immigrant community through its marketing materials, partnerships, outreach, and assistance to local organizations, donations, and to report to the community board bi-annually on marketing and leasing activities. The board requests that the Finger Buildings be reviewed for New York City Landmark designation and state and national historic register status. Issue number two is housing and displacement. The board identified affordable housing and the displacement of longtime residents as the most critical issue facing the district. Conditions for the applicant focused on funding a number of initiatives, including a community-led housing fund, a legal services fund for residents, and the costs associated with the direct displacement of any families or businesses within the lots that the applicant intends to acquire on Third Avenue. It also called on the applicant to fund a report on affordable housing if the call to HPD is not met, which I will describe next. Conditions addressed to the city include a call for the Department of Housing Preservation and Development, HPD, to fund a report on affordable housing in the district within one year of the rezoning being adopted, that is produced by an organization to be selected by the community board. HPD and the Office of Civil Justice within the Human Resources Administration should provide details on the affordable housing initiatives and legal services that have been provided to Community District Seven residents. And they called on an expansion of pilot programs and outreach efforts, such as the basement conversion program, existing affordable housing subsidy programs, and the creation of new programs by HPD, HDC, and the State of New York Mortgage Authority. Issue number three is traffic and transit. The board highlighted concerns regarding truck congestion, pedestrian and bicycle safety, the need to reduce parking in the area, accessibility, and transit, and called on the applicant and the city to take measures to address these issues. It calls on the applicant to approve the pedestrian streetscape, fund a series of traffic studies following the rezoning, and approve waterfront access. The board calls on the city to fund a number of traffic studies on truck routes, safe routes to school along Third Avenue, additional vehicular ramp entrances to the BQE at 39th Street, pedestrian safety within the industrial business zone or IBZ, a new ferry stop along the waterfront, parking along Third Avenue and below the Guanis Expressway. Calls for enhanced enforcement of traffic laws and more information about the timing of planned transportation improvements throughout the district. It calls on the MTA to review additional exits from the 36th Street subway station and to reopen secondary subway entrances throughout Community District Seven. Also called on the MTA to study capacity improvements to the existing bus lines that serve the project area. And it calls on the Department of City Planning to review a transit entrance improvement FAR bonus for development sites along Fourth Avenue between 32nd and 37th Streets. Issue number four is the environment and health. The board highlighted concerns regarding air pollution, socioeconomic factors that contribute to negative health outcomes, climate change, and resiliency, and sustainability. The board calls on the applicant to further initiatives regarding corporate social responsibility, alternative and renewable energy, sustainable building practices, recycling, and stormwater management. It also calls on the applicant to meet or exceed requirements of local laws 97, 92, and 94 regarding energy efficiency and sustainable roofs. Calls for funding a study for the community board on neighborhood-wide climate impact and brownfield site remediation. Calls for funding a new industrial business zone business improvement district or bid. Calls for funding improvements and the maintenance of five city parks and playgrounds throughout Community District Seven. And the board calls on the city to provide information on infrastructure implementation and to assist in the organization of an IBZ bid and to conduct a study on air pollution near schools in Community District Seven. The board calls on CONED, National Grid, and DEP to study and report on electric, gas, water, and sewer systems, and for NYSERTA to provide technical assistance to businesses within the industrial business zone to further clean energy initiatives. Issue number five is jobs and economic development. The board highlighted concerns that the Industry City proposal will not prioritize manufacturing uses as stated in the 197A Plan, and that other uses such as office, big-box retail, hotel, warehousing, and last-mile distribution could detract from the neighborhood's vision for the IBZ. The board calls on the applicant to provide a manufacturing set-aside that's managed by a nonprofit organization of a minimum amount of space of 1.5 million square feet. This set-aside should include business incubator space and artist workspaces, and should provide lease protections, preferential rents, and preference tenants that comply with the Climate Change Leadership and Community Protection Act. There should be mandatory mediation procedures for all lease renegotiations, and the applicant is called on to create a financing mechanism to enhance industrial business creation. And it calls on the applicant to provide a plan to increase the services provided to local residents by the Innovation Lab and to support older adults, as well as adults with disabilities. The board calls on the city to target business incentive programs within the district, provide information on tenants at Industry City that use higher NYC or receive NYC IDA benefits, and it calls on City Council to pass the Small Business Jobs Survival Act. Issue number six is youth and education. The board highlighted concerns regarding youth employment and training needs, and calls for local hiring, increasing funding for training and educational programs, a focus on services for children and adults with disabilities, and support for new educational community facilities in the district. They call on the applicant to continue local partnerships with public schools, implement local hiring and support a living wage, fund a variety of training programs, and lease space to community facility partners. It calls on the city to explore a new vocational and technical high school modeled off of the STEAM program at the Brooklyn Navy Yard, provide funding for STEM education, and new playgrounds and recreational space, and to locate CUNY and local community colleges at Industry City. Issue number seven is land use and process. Modifications and conditions associated with the land use actions include the following: prohibit the following uses: hotels, formula retail, retail in excess of 10,000 square feet per establishment; distribution and warehousing; trucking terminals; self-storage; nightclubs with a capacity of over 200 persons; university or education programs that are for-profit; or inaccessible to residents based on income; and public schools that serve a population younger than high school. With regards to the manufacturing and industrial uses, for every square foot of office space, an equal amount of studio, manufacturing, or industrial use must be in operation. Manufacturing uses must have 24/7 access to service, freight, and loading. And warehousing that's ancillary to wholesale trade must be restricted to 10,000 square feet per establishment unless community board approval is secured. With regards to retail use, retail should be prohibited in the 39th Street buildings. The cap on retail across the special permit should be 300,000 square feet. All retail should be restricted to 10,000 square feet per establishment. A grocery store could be permitted that meets fresh requirements, only located in the ground floor of Building 11. Primary access to retail storefronts should be prohibited on the numbered street frontages within the Finger Buildings, and primary storefront entrances must be located within 100 feet from the street line of Second Avenue or Third Avenue. In terms of parking, the parking requirement should be triggered above a 40,000-square-foot threshold for any retail space, and 30% of all parking spaces should support electric car charging. In terms of open space, the courtyards in the Finger Buildings should remain unbuilt upon and accessible to the public, and waterfront regulations should apply to the special permit area. In terms of bulk, a maximum FAR of 4.5 should apply. There should be mandatory building walls along First, Second, and Third Avenues. There should be a minimum street wall height of 85 feet, and a maximum building height of 110 feet for all new buildings. Regarding transparency and oversight, the board calls on a community advisory committee to be organized by Community Board Seven to receive bi-annual updates from Industry City on commitments and progress regarding local laws and special permit findings. The applicant must engage with CB7 in advance of any future certifications related to the special permit. And the applicant should provide a master leasing plan that shows all areas dedicated for lease by use, as well as public spaces, entrances, loading areas, and mechanical equipment areas, including the square footages for all areas. There were two specific changes that were requested regarding the special permit findings for use in bulk. The first one on top is a wording change to Use Finding 2.1, which you can see, and the second change is a new finding to add to the bulk findings. Throughout the seven key issues, there were a number of modifications that were requested regarding the DEIS, that it determine the impact on local businesses in a larger geographic area than what was analyzed, specifically the area extending from First to Eighth Avenues and from 15th Street to the LARR cut in the south, which is roughly around 60th Street or 67th Street, that a racial and ethnic impact study be conducted before and after the rezoning, that SEACR methodology be modified to review direct and indirect housing and business displacement throughout the entirety of the community district, and that the analysis include other developments and infrastructure improvements listed above. The Borough President's recommendation has not yet been received. I'm happy to take any questions.
Wow, thank you, Connie. Is that all there is? With that, we thought it made sense, even though the matter had been before the Commission before, obviously, at certification, and thank you to the many commissioners who went out and toured the site. We thought, though, that it made sense, given the breadth of the community board's recommendations, to do a more comprehensive review. So I'll toss it open now for questions. We tried to anticipate them in addressing questions that had been raised. Yes, Commissioner Dweck.
I'd like to hear what the applicant has to say in response to the community board's recommendations, some in particular including the discussion with parks or any improvements on local parks, and the employment and workforce questions. So looking forward to tomorrow's hearing for some input from the developer.
There will be an applicant team here tomorrow. Other questions? Okay, then we will be ready for and see this at the public hearing tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thanks again, Connie.
The fifth item on the agenda is a City Council modification scope determination in Brooklyn Community District 14. Lilia Carrier is here to discuss.
All right, good afternoon. So this is a proposed modification to a zoning map amendment that would change R32 to an R32 district to facilitate the continued use of an existing medical office at 2513 and 2523 Avenue O in Midwood, Community District 14 in Brooklyn. So City Council is proposing to modify the district to R31. And R31 and R32 have the same bulk regulations, so the main differences are related to use. So R32 permits detached, semi-detached... So R32 permits detached, semi-detached, single and two-family houses, as well as multifamily and attached single and two-family buildings, while R31 only allows detached and semi-detached single and two-family homes. And then the other main difference is that ambulatory diagnostic or health treatment care facility uses are limited to a maximum of 1,500 square feet under R31, where the use is allowed as of right under R32. And so the medical office in this applicant's site, it is currently 1,400 square feet. So both R31 and R32 would facilitate the legalization of the medical office use and bring the semi-detached buildings into conformance. And that concludes my presentation. Just about what the maps are, so R31 and R32 are both shown on the map on the lower left, and then the zoning map is on the right there.
And just staff believes that this change is within scope.
It is within scope, yes.
Any questions?
That was my question.
Answered. So I'll ask for an assent by show of hands to send a letter to the council letting them know that this is within scope. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. For future votes, staff have prepared reports for consideration on February 19th for Rochester Seidem, 90 Sand Street rezoning, 52nd Street rezoning, and also for consideration on the 19th, 806 Lamont Avenue in Staten Island, Arbutus Avenue, 95 Lewis Street, Madigan Place, 260 Brighton Avenue, 50 Cedar Cliff Road, and 54 Cedar Cliff Road, all of them are in Staten Island. 40 Yilmalt Avenue, which was on our agenda, is being laid over. And then for post-hearing follow-up, we have 50 Fulton Street. There was some discussion about, no, there was a question about the LPC considering an expansion of the historic district. At staff level, their discussion with LPC was that they did not feel that the sort of intervening lots were worthy of consideration for inclusion in the historic district.
And I'll also note that on Friday, I spoke with Sarah Cowell, who is the Chair of the Landmarks Preservation Commission, and she said that, given the nature of the buildings on the two lots, which are automotive uses, that there is not interest in extending the boundaries of the historic district.
The Union Square South Hotel special permit, gosh, I'm on that, 364 Avenue of the Americas. And then for 266 West 96th Street, Andrew is here to discuss.
This application by HPD for the disposition of city-owned property at 266 West 96th Street is returning for post-hearing follow-up. As a reminder, Community Board Seven voted to approve the application with conditions, and the Borough President recommended disapproval with conditions. At the public hearing, HPD and the development team addressed many of the questions posed by the commission at review session and at the public hearing itself, including the building program and details about affordability in the microunits. The applicant has since provided responses to the questions that were not addressed at the hearing. They confirmed that the NAACP Roy Wilkins Center, which provided operating space for other nonprofits at this location, including African Voices, an arts and literature organization, and Sprout, an organization providing cultural and social activities for people with developmental disabilities, will not be returning to the site after redevelopment. The NAACP has determined that, given their capital and programmatic needs, that they would be better served by selling Lot 60 and using the proceeds to benefit community organizations like the NAACP Legal Defense and Education Fund, the Studio Museum in Harlem, and other nonprofit ventures they support. The commission also requested additional information on the lessons learned from My Micro New York, also known as Carmel Place, which is the city's first all-microunit pilot project. That project, which came before the commission in 2013, approved a UDAP designation as well as the disposition of city-owned property at 335 East 27th Street in Manhattan. As part of that approval, HPD agreed to collect and analyze data from My Micro New York on an annual basis in order to measure the success of the project, which would then help inform land use policy decisions, such as potential future zoning changes, to facilitate additional microunit construction. Since the project was completed in 2016, however, HPD has not been meeting their commitment to evaluate and report on the analysis. HPD has provided some point-in-time data as of February 2020 to give the commission a sense of how the project is performing currently, and that report was included with your weekend packet. Overall, the project has seen very strong demand for the microunits, and they report that the tenant experience has been largely positive. Anecdotally, they have not seen higher turn-down rates for the affordable units.
I'll note that this was a commitment that was undertaken by HPD in two letters that were written to the commission in the prior administration and that were referenced as part of the consideration by the department. This is something that fell through the cracks. I have been speaking with the HPD commissioner, who has indicated that HPD will undertake the analysis that was called for. We can't at this point pretend that it was done, but that they will undertake it. They do note that some of the analysis that was called for at the time would require information that just isn't available, but they have committed to me, Louise Carroll, the commissioner of HPD, that within six months, they will return to us with a substantive report as opposed to the snapshot that they gave us at this point. I'm disappointed in the department that this fell through the cracks and in HPD, but pleased that HPD is taking the commitment seriously and will be returning to us. Yes, Commissioner Marin.
I would be interested in knowing what is the information that isn't available when the criteria set forth for that information was based on the development. So I'm not understanding that.
It's some of the horizontal analyses, looking beyond just this development itself. No, very much so. That is -- Other comments or questions?
I have one more slide if it's --
Okay.
To put the Carmel Place pilot into a broader discussion about microunits and affordability, HPD has found that the stock of single-room occupancy units, which historically have been an important housing type for single adults, has declined by 20% in the past decade. Increasing the supply of microunits is an attempt to fill this gap in the market. DCP's own research has shown that, overall, housing construction in New York City has not kept pace with growth in population and jobs. This phenomenon is especially acute in more affluent neighborhoods such as the Upper West Side, which has seen a net decrease in total housing units since 2012. Alongside that trend, the number of households on the Upper West Side earning less than 80% of AMI has decreased sharply since the 2000 census. With the introduction of deeply affordable units at 50 and 70% of AMI, the proposed project at West 96th Street is consistent with the city's priorities to increase socioeconomic diversity. And I can take any questions.
Actually, if you could go back for a moment.
Yes, ma'am.
I wanted to highlight the second finding there. As we've looked at the production of housing, which obviously is needed to meet our housing and particular affordability needs, as we've refined our analysis, we've noticed that there are neighborhoods where actually we are losing housing units, whether due to new construction or change to another use, or by the combination of smaller units into larger units. And this is something that we will continue to dig into. As Andrew mentioned, the decreases in housing density appear to be predominantly in wealthier neighborhoods.
Predominantly in --
Wealthier neighborhoods. Yeah, higher-income neighborhoods. Other questions? Thank you.
Okay. That concludes this review session for Tuesday, February 18th. The time is 3:23 PM.